We will now call a common council meeting of October 6, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick is excused. Alderman Dukneak.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here. Does that register?
Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Bill, would you just please start us out and we'll follow? Just start off with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, free and just for all.
Why don't we go on to the approval of minutes. Kathryn, would you read the notice of video conferencing into the record, please?
Certainly. The City of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting being conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capability was duly noticed per the City of Oak Creek Municipal Code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public have been advised of the options for participation via direct mailing to property owners. This meeting may also be viewed at the city's YouTube page, the link for which was contained in aforementioned notice methods. The meeting recording will also be accessible on the city's YouTube page within 48 hours. There is one or more public hearings scheduled as part of this meeting. After the mayor announces the public hearing, staff will read the public hearing notice into the record, state that the hearing is open and subject to the meeting procedure, and provide a brief overview of the proposal. The chair will then proceed with the hearing by making calls for public comment. Following the third call for public comment, the chair will close the public meeting and proceed to consideration of the remaining agenda items.
Thank you very much. Approval of minutes of 9:15, 2020, has everybody had a chance to go through them? When you're satisfied, motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of 9:15, 20.
Dukneak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak.
Hi.
Tillman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Next up on the agenda is a recognition award, and it's to the Grunow Company in recognition of their 100th year anniversary. And Grunow is a local company. They've been a staple of Oak Creek for many years. So Kathryn, would you please read that into record?
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation, congratulations to the Grunow Company and recognition of their 100th anniversary, whereas the Grunow Company is celebrating their 100th year in business anniversary in 2020, and whereas the Grunow Company has been chosen by the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce to receive the 2019 Business of the Year Award for businesses with 25 or more employees, and whereas the Grunow Company was established as a plumbing company in 1920 by Paul J. Grunow and has since expanded its business to include mechanical construction, fire protection, metals, and service, and whereas the Grunow Company strives to keep its customers happy and also serve their community. In 2019, Grunow sponsored the Oak Creek High School Robotics Team, the American Heart Association, the Oak Creek Fire Department, City of Burlington Volunteer Fire Association, Greendale Junior Panthers Baseball, STEM Forward, Project Echelon, and the Ronald McDonald House, and more. Additionally, Grunow employees volunteered for the Ronald McDonald House, Wisconsin Veterans Chamber of Commerce, ACE Mentor Program, and created teams and events to support Toys for Tots, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Milwaukee, National Alliance on Mental Illness, Matthew Ritner, and the AHA Heart Ball Drive. Grunow Company also sponsors and mentors four Kristo Ray Jesuit High School students. And whereas the Grunow Company has seen significant growth in the past three years, including the acquisition of Flannery Fire in Kenosha, Wisconsin, opening service division in Kenosha, Wisconsin, office expansions in Orlando, Pittsburgh, and Indianapolis, and an expansion in Youngstown, Ohio in early 2020, and whereas the Grunow Company is celebrating its 100th anniversary in 2020 and has reshaped the Milwaukee area over the last century, including the iconic riverfront Schlitz Park, U.S. Bank Center, Northwestern Mutual Tower, Visser Forum, Oak Creek Library, and Drexel Town Square. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel Bekavich, mayor on behalf of the citizens of Oak Creek hereby congratulate the Grunow Company celebrating their 100th year anniversary.
Great. Thank you so much, Kathryn.
You're welcome.
And we have with us Mr. Bill Ball from the Grunow Company. Bill, would you like to come up, please? Say a few words about Grunow. Yep, right there. On the podium.
Yeah. Thank you for those kind words. And you know, Oak Creek is our headquarters, corporate headquarters is right up the road on Anderson Court, and it's special to have our 100-year anniversary. Not only do many of our employees, you know, work out of the Oak Creek office, we have about 100 in the office, 200 more in the field, our employees also live in Oak Creek. Some of our employees are students, go to school in Oak Creek, and we're very proud to call Oak Creek our home. So thank you, Mayor, and the City Council for this recognition. We look forward to many, many more years of serving and investing in the Oak Creek community. We're proud to call it our home. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Just kind of hold tight, we'll get a picture. Alderman, anybody like to say a few words for Bill?
Yeah, sure. It was a pleasure to visit your offices. I forgot how long ago, probably half a year ago.
Probably a little more.
Yeah, maybe a little more, but it was good to see, great to see the corporate citizenship and the growth you guys have displayed. We're happy to have you in town.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Chris, Rich, Mike, anybody out there zooming in? Steve? Nothing? I'm just gonna say a few words here. Few companies make the century mark, as Grunow has. Not only have they made the century mark grown, not just in the area, but nationally. They're recognized throughout the country as one of the best mechanical contractors in the land, and we got them right here in Oak Creek. If you look at the Milwaukee skyline, it can't be ignored, their fingerprints are all over it, Northwestern Mutual Life. Schlitz Park, actually not part of Oak Creek, but much like this place, was a blighted property, and Gary Grunow personally took and redirected that and actually changed the course of downtown Milwaukee with that. So Grunow is an exceptional company, and I want to make one more note of things here. Grunow participates in a program called the VIP Program. It's Veterans in Piping. They allow our veterans to come out, they sponsor them into apprenticeships of plumbing and steam fitting and electrical. They also have an electrical division. So dynamic company, they do great things, sometimes a little bit under the radar, but glad to have you in Oak Creek, and again, you're a great partner for us. We appreciate it, Bill. So if you would, I'd love to get a picture with you at the emblem.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody at the office. I will all pass on the [inaudible].
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And again, I have met with Bill, and he is active in the community, he's a veteran himself, really gets connected into the community, so we're again lucky to have him. Gets us to number five, and that is our first public hearing, and is consideration of an early autism project and a conditional use amendment for the property for a medical clinic at 140 East Rossin Avenue. Kathryn, would you read that into the record, please?
Certainly. Public hearing number one, [inaudible] request submitted by Mary Smith, AST Learn, doing business as Wisconsin Early Autism Project, for a conditional use permit for a medical clinic and outdoor. Commercial recreation facility on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue. Applicant is Mary Smith, AST Learn, doing business as Wisconsin Early Autism Project. Property owner is East Rossin Avenue LLC, AMD LLC, and there follows the legal description. Date of notice is September 2, 2020.
Thank you, Kathryn.
You're welcome.
I thought we had Doug out there. Is Doug?
I am here.
Okay, I don't see on the screen Doug, but floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, Doug Seymour, Director of Community Development, and, okay, I'm sorry, let me do this here better. Can you see my screen? Well, I'm going to go ahead and run through the report. I am Doug Seymour.
Yeah, Doug, just so you know, your screen is visible, at least to me. There was some feedback on the audio. It looks like everything's cleared up now.
Okay, thank you all. I'm going to proceed then. This is the first of two public hearings this evening.
Can you hear it up here?
Hello?
Yeah, Doug.
All right, thank you. This is the first of two public hearings this evening, ironically both for the same property. This is for an amendment to the conditional use permit to allow for a clinic and outdoor recreation area for AST Learn doing business as the Wisconsin Early Autism Project. This property was the subject of an existing conditional use for a clinic, which has since been amended. The request this evening, in fact, both requests this evening are to further amend that. The first one is to allow for an additional clinic that would occupy between 5,200 and 7,800 square feet as part of Building B. Also includes a 50 by 25 outdoor play area on the west side of the clinic, which is in the loading dock area. And there's some additional information in your packet regarding the proposed facility. It's anticipated there'd be about 30 employees on site. There are no changes to the access involved. As part of the planning commission review, staff did have some concerns about the location of the proposed outdoor play area in this request. However, in the discussion with the planning commission, they did determine that those concerns could be mitigated through the safety installations that would be reviewed as part of the planning commission review, the plans for this development. And in fact, at their meeting of August 25, the planning commission did recommend approval of the amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to the attached conditions and restrictions. I will show you, hopefully, if you can see it. Here is a site plan of the building and the area, and the gray is the area that would be designated and occupied by the facility, as well as the outdoor play area, the recreation area that is shown in the yellow. So with that, this is a public hearing, and I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendment to conditional use, if you have signed up in advance, once you are called upon by our moderator, proceed to give your name, address, and then proceed to address your questions and or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
The first call, anybody wishing to speak? Kevin, do we have anybody?
We do have a couple sent up for this item. We have Mary Smith, the Executive Director of WEAP, Teresa Barney, WAP Vice President, and Dustin Atewski, the Product Manager.
Okay. Would they like to speak, or would they just wait for questions from council?
I believe they are only here to answer questions.
Okay. This will be the second call, then?
All right.
Third and final call.
[inaudible]
Okay, thank you. Kevin. We have some misbehaving audio tonight. We should be okay in a little bit. That is the third and final. Maybe it's me. Sorry about that, everyone. That was the third and final call. We will now close the public hearing and move on to six, which is consideration of an ordinance to approve that conditional use permit for the clinic and outdoor recreation at 140 East Rossin. Put it up to the councilman for questions. Rich, anything?
Who?
Mike? Ken?
Sorry, you guys aren't planning it?
Yes.
This site is, they're already in the building, right? At this site, or is this a proposed site, they have a proposed recreation site?
I believe it's a proposed site. Well, it's not so, it's a passive recreation site for children with autism. At times, they get them out there for.
I'm just wondering if, yeah, I saw that staff had some concerns about the location. I know planning, planning, it appears that they thought that could be remedied.
Yeah, we thought we could remedy that through different means, working hand in hand with staff.
I'm just wondering, is the owner of the building cognizant of where people are going in the building, that they can take this into account?
Yes. We talked about possibly occupying different sites that are farther off, and unfortunately, the way the building lays out and the way they rent it and what the needs.
It looks like these are small units compared to the ones maybe a little bit wider.
Yeah.
For the ones, okay. As long as that was looked at, that's fine.
If the owners want to speak on it, by all means, or the rental agents, you can bring it up to them, Ken.
That's, I'm good as well. As long as you guys pondered that, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Steve?
No, I have nothing. I've got no phone calls pro or con, so I'm okay.
Okay. Ken brings up some valid points. We did talk pretty long and hard about this. It is a different use for the building, somewhat out of the norm, I guess, for a facility quite like that, but it's really a needed part of the whole business that intends to go in there and the type of care they're going to administer. So we thought we could work around the challenges. They weren't insurmountable. We think the safety should be okay. Unfortunately, they did face the truck docks, you know, would have been better, but that's where it fell, so. Any other questions, comments?
No.
Okay, seeing none, motion on six, please.
Kerkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2984 to approve a conditional use permit amendment for a clinic and outdoor recreation area on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue.
Neack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi. Item seven is our second public hearing, and again, it is consideration of a conditional use permit for an outdoor commercial recreation facility on the property at 140 East Rossin. Keep in mind, as Doug had mentioned, this is a different property. Kathryn?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Linda Nimala, Medical Support Services, Inc., and Tender Touch Therapy for a conditional use permit amendment for an outdoor commercial recreation facility on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue. Applicant is Linda Nimala, Medical Support Services, Inc., and Tender Touch Therapy. Property owner is East Rossin Avenue LLC, MD LLC. There follows the legal description and the date of notice is September 2, 2020.
Thank you, Kathryn. Doug?
Thank you.
Want to try it again, see how we do?
I'll try it once again. Thank you. So again, it's the same property, but it's a different building on that property. So this is the building to the east of the one that we spoke of on the previous public hearing. Still 140 East Rossin Avenue. Council, we recall that there was a conditional use permit that was approved in November of 2019 for a physical occupational and speech language therapy clinic within the north portion of this building, which is Building C, and further amended to allow for an indoor recreation area for that same space. However, the conditional use permit specifically restricted that there be no outdoor activities, outdoor storage, or outdoor display in association with that conditional use. And while certainly this is an outdoor display, it is an outdoor activity that's taking place within that parking area, and so in order to use that for their outdoor recreation area, again, very similar in terms of the structure, if not in terms of the client surfer, as the previous public hearing, but it just allows the specialized therapy and recreation for the clients of this clinic. This would also be reviewed by the planning commission as far as the details of the change in the site plan, but they have, again, reviewed their request back in August and have recommended their approval, subject to the attached conditions and restrictions. So again, with that in mind, this being a public hearing, anyone with any questions or comments, you guys, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're, amend the conditional use permit for the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue for an outdoor recreation area, please, when recognized by the moderator, proceed to address the council with your questions and or comments. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. Once again, we will make three calls, this being the first. Kevin, do we have anybody wishing to speak?
We have the Project Manager, Dustin, sent up.
Would Dustin like to say a few words, or is he just here for questions?
I believe just for questions.
Okay. Second call, anybody wishing to speak?
Nobody raised their hands?
Third and final call.
And nobody for that call either.
Thank you, Kevin. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to consideration of that ordinance for the conditional use permit for the clinic and outdoor recreation area at 140 East Rossin. I'll put it to the council for questions, comments. Chris, anything?
We had this all worked out a lot easy, and more of the details wasn't as big of a deal as the other one was at planning commission, so.
Correct. Ken, anything?
Well, it's pretty straightforward, Dan.
Steve, anything from you?
Well, Mayor, I just want to add that, echo your comments from the last matters with regards to the type of commercial building we have there, and you know, it is unique to the city, so it's, we're going to get unique businesses in there, and I just think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Mike? Rich?
The question I have, Mayor, is there are no concerns with traffic off of loading docks, as I see that diagram, there is not another building next to it where there would be concern for anybody backing up.
No, actually, the way this one faced, it doesn't hit the parking lots, it's actually filled back there. And actually, keep in mind, this is a completely fenced enclosure, so it's not like neighborhood kids are going to come use it, it's strictly for the children they're treating.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, motion on eight, please.
Kerkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2983 to approve a conditional use permit amendment for a clinic and outdoor recreation area on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue.
Neack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Tillman.
Hi.
Item nine under new businesses informational on the COVID-19 update, and I don't believe Darcy's with us tonight, so Andrew, you want to say a couple words?
No, I'm not going to try to stand in on the COVID update, but you should see in your email, there was a written update in lieu of Darcy's absence here tonight, so.
Yeah. And. When was it sent? This afternoon. So the graphs and the charts are there, and far better explanations than I can provide you. The only numbers I can give you currently is currently we're at 945 positive, 8,024 negative tests, the 14-day positive rate is at 8.4. We have 859 recovered, and unfortunately, we have 21 deaths in the city. So, and that's as far as I can take that report, so. Comments, questions from anybody? No? Okay. We will move on, and we will go to item 10, which is consideration of a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between Oak Creek Health Department, the Cudahy Health Department, South Milwaukee-St. Francis Health Departments for the establishment and maintenance of a joint community COVID-19 specimen collection testing site. So Andrew, you got a little info on this?
A little dangerous with this one. I did tell Darcy I would pinch hit for her, so I think she did a really good job laying out kind of the strategy here in the report. Not having an ongoing testing site and having the City of Oak Creek attempt to do that on its own is probably not as efficient as partnering up with our other South Shore communities. That's what they've done to advance, or I guess continue, and then advance testing here for residents of Oak Creek and St. Francis in South Milwaukee. So with that, there's federal and state funds streaming in for these testing capabilities, and the idea behind this is to get this up and running in a partnership with our other communities, so we have this service available to our residents.
Thank you, Andrew. Questions, comments? We'll do the best we can to answer.
Mayor Alderman Dukneak, 3rd District, and I don't recall where I read it, it's somewhere in the notes. Am I correct in understanding that South Milwaukee will be the location for testing?
Yes, they're going to use part of the old Basyris building? Am I correct on that? No? Yes. It was, I think, I think it's part of the Basyris building, and again, I may be wrong, but I think they can utilize a facility like part of a factory where you actually could drive through.
Oh, okay.
So I.
And I was just wondering what the rationale was for the South Milwaukee location?
Yeah, it would be a drive-through.
Oak Creek, okay.
Take it, it would be some kind of big loading bay that people exit, enter on one side, exit on the other, but that's all I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything more, Melissa?
Just corroborating what you're saying, Mayor. Alderman Dukneak, that's what Darcy had indicated. She and I had talked about this agreement before tonight, and the idea was to look for a suitable location where there could be, in the cold months, just that, to have a drive-through. So it was a perfect location.
Again, want to thank the neighboring communities for reaching out and partnering. I think Andrew summed that up pretty well. Yep, go ahead.
Andrew or Mike, I might, maybe you would know. Are they strictly looking at doing PCR testing, or are they doing a variety of testing, rapid testing availability at this site, or what's the plan, Mike? Do you have a feel for that?
An assumption that it would be swab testing at this time and maybe expanding as the technology becomes more validated, but that's speculation on my part from an understanding of how the existing testing sites are working.
Thanks, Mike. Anything else? We need a motion on that, correct?
Yeah. It will move to approve resolution 12194-100620, approving the memorandum of understanding between Oak Creek Health Department, the Cudahy Health Department, and the South Milwaukee-St. Francis Health Department for the establishment and maintenance of a joint community COVID-19 specimen collection and testing site.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Tillman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
And item 11 is also informational. It is our monthly treasurer's report, ending August 31, 2020. Unfortunately, Barb cannot be with us tonight. Any questions concerning Barb's report? And again, if you ever have a question, Barb's readily accessible by email and the whole thing, just unfortunately, she couldn't make it here tonight. Moving on, we will go to 12, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing the participation in the agreement for mutual aid assistance for fire and rescue services between the City of Oak Creek and other Milwaukee County municipal fire agencies. We have Chief Kresic with us, and he's going to bring you up the.
airport. Obviously, that's down substantially this year. The City of Franklin, South Milwaukee, Cudahay, and Milwaukee appears somewhere in that top four. This year's data is similar with the exception of the airport. You know, a substantial drop in responses there due to a decrease in activity with flights. So when we look, it's, it's relatively consistent number-wise where we go over the years. The volume tends to increase and decline at times, but you can tell who we're participating with on a regular basis. I would say that single-station departments, such as South Milwaukee, such as St. Francis, Cudahay has two stations with, with some staffing modifications. You know, certainly, we may see a greater response there just because of the, the capabilities are a little bit more limited than you would see here. So I kind of hope that kind of created a little bit of...
But obviously, we don't want to be, you know, we always struggle. We're investing in the fire services and EMS this year again with, with a personnel add. And we want to make sure, you know, St. Francis, I think, takes EMS from the City of Milwaukee.
Yes, they do.
So it's going to make sure that mix is, making sure we're not supplementing Milwaukee, what Milwaukee should be spending in their, in their fire budget, so.
I can provide a, I'll go back with a little bit of example. When we started in 2012 with the mutual aid response with the City of Milwaukee, and I, I had the opportunity to be involved in the early discussions, meeting with their assistant chief at the time, we, we took a geographic approach and said, hey, where are we going to respond in the City of Milwaukee where it makes sense time-wise? And where would Milwaukee come into Oak Creek where it makes sense time-wise? And when I say makes sense time-wise, is there another agency that's closer, or is that the closest agency that could respond? When we looked at fire responses, strictly fire responses, we, we estimated roughly five a year in either direction, where we would go in, or they would come into our mostly northwestern part of the city. That has remained relatively stable. Those are relatively developed areas right now without a lot of change in growth or density. So we're seeing that, from that fire perspective, those remain relatively stable.
All right. You know, I won't beat a dead horse, but that's just concerning just making sure we're, we're on equal footing, at least as reasonably as we could be.
Understood and noted, yes.
Great. Thank you. And Chris? Mike?
Yeah, Chief, I think what Ken asked kind of covers what I wanted to ask, but one other question would be, as far as staffing in the City of, of South Milwaukee, is that held steady? I know the city isn't growing itself, but are they maintaining their staff levels?
I would, I'd be speculating on a longer-term basis, but I know over the recent history, it's remained relatively stable. But I would assume that it's down, if we went back to the start of this agreement, 96, I'd be speculating that there may have been some variations, but it's appeared to be stable over the, the recent years.
Rich? Steve?
Nothing.
Okay. No, we, we cover this pretty extensively at ICC, and actually, the, the chiefs really worked this out between themselves, and they really do have good relationships going on, and they understand, they understand the fire service. So I, I think it's a pretty square deal all the way around for those that need it, as well as Oak Creek, so. All right. All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, motion on 12.
It will move to approve resolution 12193-100620, authorizing participation in the agreement for mutual assistance for fire and rescue services between the City of Oak Creek and other Milwaukee County municipal fire agencies.
Kuzickowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski?
Aye.
Dukeniak?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzickowski? Aye.
And item 13 concerns information technology and its consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for information technology services between the City of South Milwaukee and the City of Oak Creek. We have Kevin with us conveniently tonight.
All right. So this is just updating the 2016 agreement that we had in place. The biggest change is we're going from a $19,000 paid per hour to a $40,000 upfront payment in January of every year. The past couple of years, they have started to exceed that $19,000. So we wanted to make sure that we were covering Oak Creek so that we had the staffing to both support them and the City of Oak Creek.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions for Kevin concerning the agreement with South Milwaukee?
One, Dan, sir.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
I forgot. Is there a cap on the number of hours they can bill us for, ask us for before we bill them for extra, or not?
There is not. It's all at, so right now, under the current agreement, it's per hour. So they can ask as much as they want. It's guaranteed that they get $19,000 based on the contract. But the new one is the, the $40,000, so we could be, we could say, okay, you're getting close. Let's tone back what we're doing for you. There's also verbiage in it for any larger projects that we kind of sit down with them beforehand and go over, okay, this is how many hours we expect it to cost you, and how do you want to handle that? So they've been really good to work with. And the new staff over there, especially in their clerk's office and their assistant city administrator, there are contact people over on their side, and they've been awesome to work with and just are finishing up a phone system replacement for them too this year so far. So it's been good for both parties.
Great. Steve, anything from you?
No, nothing.
Chris? Rich?
Just the comment, and I think it was brought up at the budget meetings on Friday. Kev, congratulations to you and whoever else was part of getting that additional revenue from South Milwaukee, and then those cost-saving measures, which enabled us to, well, it's not been approved yet, but will hopefully enable us to add a full-time employee for a very minimal cost. So congratulations on those efforts, Kev. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, this, this is one thing that's worked out very well, and, and really is how government should assist one another when, when possible. So this is great. Okay. No other questions for Kevin? Motion, please.
It will move to approve resolution 12192-100620, approving an intergovernmental agreement for information technology services between the City of South Milwaukee and the City of Oak Creek.
Kuzickowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukeniak?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzickowski?
Aye.
Okay. Item 14 gets us to engineering, and it is consideration of a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewer District and the City of Oak Creek, outlining responsibilities for the delivery and recipient of clean soil from the district's Wilson Parks Reach 3 Phase 1 project for the beneficial reuse at the city properties at 8940, 8730, and 9010 South Fifth Avenue. Mike's got this one?
I do.
Mike, you with us?
Yes, I am. Hopefully, everybody can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, these, the three properties here on Fifth Avenue listed are the city-owned parcels in our North Lake Vista properties, and that is also known as the former Peter Cooper site, and is adjacent to another larger parcel that is owned by West Park. And council is well aware, based on us having related items over the past several months on this, that we continue to work towards remediation of those sites and getting them prepared for redevelopment. City parcels in particular are slated for really public open space, like a bluff-top park. And then the adjacent parcel to the, to the west, the West Park, is expected to develop commercially someday. But at any rate, so we, we, again, we've been working to try and get this site remediated, and the remediation is, is expected to be in the form of a capping of the site much like this West Park property for several years back. Also, watching the, the bluff. It is eroding away and with the high lake levels, and so we're working towards a project to permanently stabilize that bluff in the coming years as well. So what we need is a very large volume of clean soil, which we have identified in working with MMSD. They have a large project on the south side of Milwaukee. I guess I would call it in the vicinity of Sixth Street, where Sixth Street meets, heads under the interstate, so a little north of Lake Avenue. There is a large vacant land there by that steel manufacturing plant that is going to be excavated for a very large retention pond. That soil's all been sampled and found to be clean and confirmed with our environmental consultant, and to the Department of National Resources Satisfaction. So this is a really big benefit, this soil being available in such large volume. And so we have, staff has worked with MMSD staff to hammer out this intergovernmental cooperation agreement at ICA. That really outlines the responsibilities for that soil that's being excavated, transported to Lake Vista North Properties, and used for that clean soil cap. And also, access to that would be used, would be put in the stockpile for the natural stabilization project. So basically, this, you know, the recommendation is that, that the council does approve and enter into this agreement with MMSD. The high points of this agreement, they are very simple. MMSD will transport this soil at no cost to the city from their excavation site to our lakefront sites. And that the city's responsibilities are to outline what's their haul route, providing an access road for the trucks to enter the site. And they're going to be coming fast and furious, so it's, it's a substantial access road. And then to take care of erosion control, the grading of the soil out to the clean soil cap to its final configuration. And to that end, you know, we have a grading plan, and we are working on the DNR for necessary approvals, and we're very close to getting those approvals. We all, we already have the approval of several little artificial wetlands that, that are across the state. So I've talked quite a bit, and I expect you might have some questions. But this is, this is nothing new. We had introduced this topic over, over the course of the last several years.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike? I want to start with Rich.
Mike, and we may have discussed this previously, but can you provide an estimate as to what the value of that free soil is going to be? There's got to be a significant savings to our community.
We do, we do. And we, we have some good numbers because we were excavating soil and having it brought in as Lake Vista Park was constructed four years ago. And, you know, we, we have an estimated, you know, anywhere between $2 and $3 million. That would be, we, if we had to hire a contractor to excavate, load, haul, and, and, and transport to, to the site. So it's, this is something that we've been working hard to try to find, and it's a great opportunity.
Now, this is quite a blessing.
Indeed. Make sure we send MMSD a Christmas card. At least a nice one. Mike?
Hi, Mike. Alderman, Mike Toman. Congratulations to you and your department, your, your staff, because, you know, as you just mentioned, this is the second time now that we've hit the jackpot on clean soil and trucking, which is, is huge with the nubri just shot. That's incredible. It's going to help for the, further development of the lakefront, which is in my district and been a big advocate for, and the rest of the city will be too, and once they see this thing finished. I got a couple of questions here. Where are we? We haven't started on the road at all yet, have we? That's, that's coming up soon, right?
Right, yes. Yeah, we had hoped actually to be working on that by now, and, and...
So, what we need is a very large volume of clean soil, which we have identified in working with MMSD. They have a large project on the south side of Milwaukee, I guess I would call it the vicinity of Sixth Street, where Sixth Street meets, heads under the interstate, so a little north of Lake Avenue. There is a large vacant land there by that steel manufacturing plant that is going to be excavated for a very large retention pond. That soil's all been sampled and found to be clean and confirmed with our environmental consultant, remember, and to the Department of National Resources Satisfaction. So, this is a really big benefit, this soil being available in such large volume. And so, we have, staff has worked with MMSD staff to hammer out this intergovernmental cooperation agreement at ICA. That really outlines the responsibilities for that soil that's being excavated, transported to Lake Vista North properties, and used for that clean soil cap. And also, access to that would be used, would be put in the stockpile for the eventual stabilization project. So, basically, this, you know, the recommendation is that the council does approve and enter into this agreement with MMSD. The high points of this agreement, they are very simple. MMSD will transport this soil at no cost to the city from their excavation site to our lakefront sites, and that the city's responsibilities are to outline what's their haul route, providing an access road for the trucks to enter the site, and they're going to be coming fast and period, so it's a substantial access road. And then to take care of erosion control, the grading of the soil out to the clean soil cap to its final configuration. And to that end, you know, we have a grading plan, and we are working, the DNR, for necessary approvals, and we're very close to getting those approvals. We already have the approval of several little artificial wetlands that are across this thing. So, I've talked quite a bit, and I expect you might have some questions, but this is nothing new. We had introduced this topic over the course of the last several meetings.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike? I want to start with Rich.
Mike, and we may have discussed this previously, but can you provide an estimate as to what the value of that free soil is going to be? There's got to be a significant savings to our community.
We do, we do. And we have some good numbers because we were excavating soil and having it brought in as Lake Vista Park was constructed four years ago. And, you know, we have an estimated, you know, anywhere between $2 and $3 million. That would be, if we had to hire a contractor to excavate, load, haul, and transport to the site, so it's, this is something that we've been working hard to try to find, and it's a great opportunity.
Now, this is quite a blessing.
Indeed. Make sure we send MMSD a Christmas card, at least a nice one.
Mike?
Hi, Mike. Alderman, Mike Toman. Congratulations to you and your department, your staff, because, you know, as you just mentioned, this is the second time now that we've hit the jackpot on clean soil and trucking, which is huge with the number you just shot. That's incredible. It's going to help for the, further development of the lakefront, which is in my district and been a big advocate for, and the rest of the city will be too, and once they see this thing finished. I got a couple of questions here. Where are we at? We haven't started on the road at all yet, have we? That's, that's coming up soon, right?
Right, yes. Yeah, we had hoped actually to be working on that by now, and we still expect that we'll see crews mobilized out there, if not later this week, then for sure next week.
Okay, all right. Once this, once this cap gets put in place, are we going to have similar restrictions that we have on a cap that's already been done? Are the restrictions going to be similar to what we already have?
They will be, they'll be different. There was different constituents in the soil, and I think you're referring to, Mike, the Lake Vista South properties?
Right, right.
Yeah. And the remediation followed a different program with the DNR. Recall, the South properties were VPLA, volunteer party liability exemption, and they were very, very stringent on the, on the cap and how the cap could be manipulated afterwards. There are some areas where you just cannot dig into that cap at all, there are other areas where you can, but you have to handle the soil in a certain manner, very careful how you're placing it back in the excavation. These North properties are to different standards. You know, everything will be approved and safe, but will not have to be as stringent as watched. Will close.
Thank you.
Good night, Mike.
Yeah.
Steve, anything from you?
Nope. Echo what other Alderman has said. Good job. Great to save the city a couple million dollars in a project like this.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Ken?
I'm with you.
Chris?
Thank you.
No, I'm just going to say it again, it's quite a blessing. Alderman, Toman said it, it's the second time we got it. Sometimes it's hard to get excited about dirt, but this is something we really, really needed, and conveniently, it's rather close. Think about if the trucking, and Mike's probably basing his estimate on the same trucking distance, if we had to take it farther, savings would be even greater. So, this gets us one step closer to moving on the lake, so, pretty exciting all in all. Motion on 14, please.
Alderman will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 12191, approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between Milwaukee, between MMSD and the city of Oak Creek, outlining responsibilities for the delivery and receipt of clean soil from the district's Wilson Park Reach 3 Phase 1 project for beneficial reuse at the city properties at 8940, 8730, and 9010 South Fifth Avenue.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Just a quick question.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Chris.
When you were saying, when you were going with the motion, you started with the 12191. I didn't hear you finish off the, it's just the date.
Okay. I don't think that's a necessary addition, is it?
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Learned that from Alderman Fickler, by the way, to save, to save a lot of time. You know. Oh, the, oh, gotcha. Yeah.
It helps for availability.
Item 15 is the license committee, and I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody has had an opportunity to review the common council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? All right. Seeing nor hearing anybody, Kirkowski, you make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the October 6, 2020 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Yeah. Toman.
Aye.
And item 16 is our vendor summary report for ending September 30, 2020. Anybody, please take a look, and if you have any questions, I will direct it to the appropriate person for answers.
On number 14, sorry, where did we go here? Oh, $14,000. Item number 17, $14,000 to Southern Police K-9 for patrol narcotics detection K-9. Those fees, though, were supposed to be paid for by a donation from a citizen? So, is that just a pass-through of the donated money?
Right.
Okay, correct. Okay.
Are there any other questions? If not, motion to, if somebody, please make a motion to approve.
Gale moves to approve the September 30, 2020, vendor summary report in the total amount of $869,346.58.
Guzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item 17, this consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to discuss the development at the property located at 9300 South Fifth Avenue and 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard and 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman, Gale.
Gale, move to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub B, to discuss development at the property located at 9300 South Fifth Avenue, 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard, and 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard.
Alderman will second.
Toman.
Alderman, Toman.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
We'll now convene into closed session, please.
See you later.
Okay.
See you later.
Okay. Good night.
Bye, Larry.
We'll now look for a motion to reconvene into open session.
Gale moves to reconvene into open session.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Chris had a, excuse him.
Oh. Kirkowski.
Aye.
Okay. There is no action needed tonight. That will get us to adjournment. Motion?
Make a motion to adjourn. Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Okay. Want to thank everybody that stayed up late to watch us. Enjoy your week, please, and a few more weeks left of farmers' market, so enjoy it. It's supposed to be a nice week.